Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its hands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Do we have anyone in the public that has filled out a blue sheet to give public comments this morning? No? No comments this morning? Okay, we will therefore proceed ahead with our consent agenda.
The only question I had was the, item number three. He decided not to be on it, you know, after one meeting. Do we, thinking for the one meeting, or, I mean, I like, I actually met, I met him and talked to him about how we'd really wanted him to be on it, but, so.
I hear what you're saying. I mean, it was, it's, I think, you know, he put his name in, he started to get involved, determined it was too much of a commitment.
Okay, so good.
Yeah, but good discussion.
I think the letter is more of a formality, of saying thank you.
Yeah, okay.
It's the formal end.
I just want him to feel like, this is kind of a...
Celebrating one meeting. I understand what you're saying.
You could write a personal note on the letter.
Yep.
Yes.
I actually went, met with him and, okay, so I have no, nothing I need to draw aside? Move approval of the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, so we will now proceed to our first action item. Matthew Martin? It's the consideration of approval of document number 2020154, improvement agreement for the Tetheroe subdivision.
Yes, thank you. Matthew Martin, Deschutes County Planning Division. What's before you today is consideration of an improvement agreement for bonding of street and utility improvements associated with a 42-lot subdivision within the Tetheroe overall development area. The estimated costs of the improvements are approximately $879,000. This has been reviewed by the county road department and found to be sufficient for the cost of the overall improvements. Requirements for the improvement agreement are that the applicant provide a 110% bond or surety, 120, excuse me, surety for the improvements, of which they are in a position to provide a cash deposit in county accounts for those improvements. So happy to answer any specific questions you have. Otherwise, back to you Chair Adair for consideration.
Okay, I just have a question. Can you tell us how many vacant residential lots they have currently at Tetheroe?
I cannot.
You cannot. Can you get that answer for me at some point in time?
Certainly can, absolutely. I expected representatives of the applicant to be here today and, sorry, I have not met them, but perhaps they can answer those questions specific to the development.
Okay, great.
What I, from my understanding is, it's almost variable, as in there's X amount, a parcel, and then how many lots end up there, but yeah, we can hear them.
Exactly. I'm Alexis Garrettz from Tetheroe Vacation Homes slash Velocity US Properties.
Nicole Jones.
And there's, I don't, I don't know that an exact open lot number, but I believe there's about 10% that has not been developed overall, because we aren't, we don't, we're not responsible for the remaining of it, but we would be happy to get you an exact open lot number. I believe up that, most of that's down in the lower areas towards the Tartan Droom and that part of the development.
Well, I was just, I thought this was a perfect opportunity to ask, because we have a housing strategies, and on that, there was a number given, and I just thought, well, it's great, you're here, and I can ask today, what is the, you know, what is the exact number? So, thank you very much. I would appreciate, at some point in time.
Yeah, we'll get that.
So you made the comment that you have 10% that's not developed, you mean the infrastructure's not in, or 10% that don't have houses on them?
That is, that does not have homes on it yet.
Geez, that's amazing.
That's, I think, what's left. That's what I keep hearing the real estate agents saying.
We built one of the first houses in there, and it was the only house we started in 2009, in the recession, and for about nine months, I mean, there was, but there was only, I don't know how many houses there now, then maybe 10% had been built, so that's in a decade, there's been that much construction. That's amazing. I had a question, as I always do, that, where is this subdivision? I mean, I don't have a bigger map of the resort, so...
So this is right off of Meeks Trail, at the end of where the vacation home zoning is, off of Solomon Drive. So if you turn up Skyline Ranch Road, and then you turn right onto Meeks Trail, it is on the, the west side of the road, between the Rim Development and the, the Tetheroe Vacation Home, where they end. So Solomon Drive and Tetheroe Drive.
I don't really know those streets.
So right, right to the right of the resort.
So there's, this is a, now a vacant area. There's a lot of houses, I know where you turn right, is that Meeks Trail off of the...
That's Meeks Trail, yes.
You're going up to the golf course and the restaurant.
Yes.
You turn right, and you go out there, there's a bunch of houses out there. So it's somewhere between there, where those houses are, and the resort facilities?
Yes.
Okay, and is it the rest of that area, or is there more left?
It's the, it's the remaining, on the left side of the road, it's the remaining open space there. There's still some, there are still some open lots on the right side of Meeks Trail.
Okay, so and the big lots then, in this map, are the view lots out on the north side of that parcel, and then, I would guess...
I'd find if I approached.
Yeah, sure.
If you look it up on dial, it's real easy to see, oh, that's where it is, because I was able to do that yesterday.
That's the resort area, and then these are, this is the rim, the golf course is right here.
Okay, yeah, so that's, yeah, there it is, right there. Good, yeah, that's perfect.
This is the golf course, this is that Meeks Trail road coming up.
Yeah, okay, so it fills out that rim.
Yes, it fills out the space between the resort and the rim.
It's interesting, there's some new house lots up there. Because it was, one thing that was different about Tethro when they developed is a lot of the lower-end housing was saved for the developer to develop, like they have, and as opposed to the home sites, a lot of resorts, they put the home sites as the primary thing, and it seems like you're doing that, but, kind of a combination here. Okay?
This is a, this is a townhome tract, so there's five private, or not, we say private, custom, custom homes on the ridge, and then we have 36 townhome style, style units that are going to range from 11 to approximately 2,200 square feet is our goal. And, and then there's a commercial lot on the corner that we can put offices in, for own use.
Okay. The other question I had is just generally, in the last, I guess, two meetings, we've had two of these bonding agreements. Is there some reason this is becoming popular? I mean, they weren't connected, but we haven't had any, in the first three years I've been here, I don't think, and so I was just curious why, why that's being done now.
I'll let Matt speak further. I believe it's just the timing of construction and moving forward in these, these projects, and this is how they're securing those, those improvements.
Yeah, and to build on that, in Deschutes County rural, Deschutes County, we see very few subdivisions, and so there's, there's very, there's limited infrastructure that's associated with those, and the size of the subdivisions are limited. So typically, based on the size, they're, they go ahead and install those infrastructure prior to final plating. In this instance, just as Dave alluded to, it's a, it's a timing, it's an interest in establishing the, and recording the final plat, so that the lots can be sold in advance of the infrastructure being installed.
Is that what your goal is, or...
Yes, so, is it help of fire design?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so what, what the goal is, is we, those private lots on the rim, those have been separately sold, and so that's really what, what that is aiding.
That's why you're wanting to get the final plat done?
Yes. Well, we want, I mean, we would like to get the townhomes built. There's such a, there's been such a high demand for that style of home on our side of town.
But you've done a lot where you put in infrastructure before, you didn't need to get a bond or secure any...
No, I, I think this is just the choice of the group that's putting it in.
Okay. And then the other question, I guess, for legal is just the, or maybe for Matt, just the length and all of the terms, there's nothing unusual in any of this, or...
No, this is actually kind of a revised, I see Adam getting up, he worked pretty hard with planning staff, and this is our, kind of a cleaned up, newer version of the improvement agreements that the board will be seeing. Adam, speak up.
Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. Commissioner, yes, this is a very, very similar to the version you saw for separate development last week. As you noted, this is the first new improvement agreement we've had in quite some time, so we took the opportunity to work with attorneys representing both parties and clean up. There were numerous different versions of improvement agreements floating around, so we put fresh eyes on it, cleaned up the language, simplified some things, and there are some minor semantic tweaks from the version you saw last week to this one, and then the only other, I would say, more substantive tweaks are just to recognize that they're putting up cash for their security. Otherwise, it's, 99% of it's the exact same as the version you saw last week. Otherwise, it's ninety-nine percent of it's the exact same as the version you saw last week.
No other questions?
Just acknowledging, you know, this is a July land use approval, so that's a process in itself and now we've got to this improvement agreement and acknowledging that kind of the new generation of the document and hopefully a good partnership with the developer, just making sure we're getting both, you know, both sides taken care of here. The roads will be put in one way or another, right? That's what we're doing. But yeah, let's, I support it and it's a real positive environment right now.
So, you have any, I'll move approval of document number twenty twenty dash one five four improvement agreement for Tethro Tract A B subdivision.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? No, I, I just found it a fascinating read that you have to have three gallon shrub baskets and your, you know, your pine tree and all the portions of landscaping. It's, it's always nice to read, so when you go up there, I'll look at it totally differently.
The required elements.
Yes, yes, the little details. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you very much for coming today. And if you'll let me know about how many units, I will, I will love to put that in our, my schedule.
Madam Chair, I have a proposed letter for the board. It's a positive letter that I'd like to explain and possible for support, so just before everybody breaks up instead at the very end of the meeting.
Sure.
So I'd like to explain, Deschutes Cultural Coalition, Oregon's cultural trusts, Deschutes Cultural Coalition is going to be honoring Gene Wells Keenan, the founder of the Sisters Quilt Show this evening. So it's a Ben Westland Memorial Award. So we are all invited to this and I'm not going to be available and I think we're all going to be going to a different event. So just a, a letter of congratulations to Gene Wells Keenan for the Sisters Outdoor Quilt Show and receiving this award. So I'd, you know, move letter signature on this document and there's one in the, in the documents I gave to Sharon already.
Yeah, I'd be very supportive. Among other things, she's related to all the Wellses in Hood River, which was my.
Well, there you go.
My brother's first wife.
Oh!
My friends and so I know Gene.
So just be a.
She's done an amazing amount of things in, with regard to the quilt show and I think she started out Blackbeet Ranch before that, I mean, back in the.
Well, there's just a couple of sentences here. I'll read the content so you guys know what we're proposing. So, Dear Gene, congratulations on your selection as this year's recipient of the Deschutes Cultural Coalition's Ben Westland Memorial Award. Your passion for quilting and teaching has translated into an amazing legacy that will have lasting impact on central Oregon. We celebrate your instrumental efforts in start and run of the Sisters Quilt Show, which, as we all know, has put sisters on the map for quilt enthusiasts around the world. We look forward to celebrating the quilt show's forty-fifth anniversary this July. Congratulations.
Great.
So yeah.
I'd move approval of the letter.
All right, and that was my motion, yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
Yes, wonderful. Okay, Tanya Saltzman, we now have our public hearing continuation for the Sun River Business Park Employee Housing Text Amendments.
Good morning, Commissioners. As stated, this is the continuation, excuse me if I have a coughing fit.
Maybe Nick could get you some water.
Yes, yes. This is the continuation of a public hearing that was begun on February twelfth, twenty twenty, a week ago today, to consider ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero four text amendments to Deschutes County Code, Chapter eighteen, one oh eight, one ten, Sun River Business Park District. The applicant, Sun River Resort Limited Partnership, proposes amendments that would allow employee housing as an outright permitted use in the Sun River Business Park zoning district. I'll give you an overview of kind of a memo and I did hand out a bunch of documents that I'll review briefly and then we can open it up for discussion. So in the memo, that was just a brief summary of what occurred in the hearing as well as an overview of the testimony provided. That testimony, the written version of it, is provided in your packet. In addition, after the submission of the hearing, or the continuation packet, we received one public comment, which should, you should each have on your desk there. In addition to that, I have provided three working versions of the amendments and I will explain the differences between those shortly. And then finally, I've provided two maps, which are the same thing that's up there on, on the wall, just showing a one and a two mile radius around the Sun River UUC, just for illustrative purposes. As well as a closer up, a higher quality aerial than I've provided in the past, showing the actual business park zoning district with the parcel lines indicated. So if you have any questions concerning those maps, I'm happy to answer them. And then just an overview of the amendments that are provided. So after the continuation of the public hearing, the applicant worked to create revisions of those amendments based on the concerns that were voiced by both the commissioners as well as the public. We have a few different iterations of this. The first, the first version, they should be labeled at the top, changed the definition of employees to those working within a one mile radius from the UUC boundary and Mount Bachelor. That removed the age restriction of eighteen and older and changed that.
As you go through this, should we ask questions about why changes were made? I mean, or, I mean, there's a lot of parts to this.
Yes.
So.
Whatever.
You want to summarize them all and then we'll ask about the first revision.
Maybe I'll do.
We have the applicants and we have counsel.
Yeah, it is.
We have our ideas and so on.
Maybe I'll just do a quick overview of what the documents are and then we could go back over those if that works. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. This first version also created a new definition of employer that didn't exist before. It limited the operation of housing structures to employers as defined and it slightly modified the definition of dormitory to capture common areas and kitchens. And that was based mostly on applicant revisions and in response to what occurred in the public hearing. Staff and legal counsel then reviewed that and just tweaked it a little bit to create version two and you'll see the highlighted areas in version two show those additional corrections. Further, we further revised the definition of employee to require the employee to work for the employer as defined. In other words, they have to work for essentially Sun River or Mount Bachelor. There was consideration of naming the specific resorts at first, but then that just didn't really sit well. It kind of gave the appearance of spot zoning and also what if there were name changes in the future or ownership changes, it just was a little bit messy. So this was a solution that we believe closed that loop. There was, we added a clause regarding spouses and families back in. This is to potentially address any Fair Housing Act issues. And finally, we broke out that provision about spouses and families as well as the employer operated housing structures into just separate subsections, just to make it clearer. So each subsection addressed one, one thing and one thing only. And then finally.
Are you going to version three now?
I'm going to version three, yeah.
Now we're going to.
Yes, I'm doing this very quickly.
So before I do that.
Of course.
Okay, I'm, I was having a hard time because you gave them together. Which of the? One version has a line three that says employee housing structures must be operated by the, by an employer. Is that our staff's version or is that the applicant's version?
Which version does it?
It's in version two.
Version two.
You're, so you're saying that's the applicant's version?
It's, this is all basing on the applicant's version and version two was just further edits to the applicant's version. So its staff has touched the applicant's provisions, version two.
So, and that's because it's in yellow highlight that came from you?
The staff, the staff edits are the yellow highlights.
Commissioner, that's in all three versions.
No, it's.
Version one to version two is just moving the location of that phrase. Typically, we, we don't usually.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to figure out how, who did what here and so, you know, you've got several versions, we're in a public meeting trying to make heads and tails of it. So the one that actually itemizes at number three, is that the applicant's version? You're saying that's the applicant's versions with input from staff?
Correct, that's.
And did the applicant agree with all those changes or did we just get them and?
It was done by a discussion with the applicant.
Okay.
Correct.
So that's what I thought. That was, I called that the applicant's and now we're going to the legal version.
The, the version two shows the, the red red lines and I apologize that this is confusing. The red lines are what the applicant initially did and then the, the yellow are the staff's additions to the applicant revision. So it kind of captures them both in version two.
You just moved it down. It was actually in the text of one and you moved it down to a separate line.
Correct, you mean number two and number three, sub two, correct.
Yes, just to give them special.
Okay.
Exactly.
This is what I'm, this is what I'm talking about.
Yes.
So just show me which one of these is the applicant's and which one's the last version you did, because I, I want to understand how this progressed because I have some issues. So somebody come tell me which is which.
Version one is the applicant.
Okay.
Version two is our.
It doesn't say on it applicant, so.
No, but it explains it in the, in the memo.
Well, I saw the memo told about all the different changes, but.
Does he have the ones with version one and two on it?
Yeah, do you have one, two and three?
Okay, well, those are the two we got in a memo from you from last Friday, so I'm not too far behind your path. And now you've got a third version. Okay.
Commissioner, just to clarify, both version one and version two were in consultation with the applicant.
So which of these is one and two?
They're numbered.
Maybe you can show me.
Okay, so this is not what you want to be looking at. She gave them to you and a paper.
We got them on Friday, yeah.
No, it's.
But I'm, I'm sorry, but I, they're doing all these changes, but really it's up to us to come up with text.
Here's version one and here's version two and that's.
So the, so these are different than these ones we got on Friday?
Right, it's a different, it's a bit different. One, two, and then there's three today.
So, if I may, one and two that's been provided on your desk today is the same one, two that I emailed to the board on Friday.
So I can look at.
There's now an addition of version three based on some comments that were received by one member of the board.
So, yeah, I was able to look at it Friday and I sent notes before I had left, so there were an email and then this is in response to that. And I'll, yeah, I'll get to my comments when we get there.
So version three is in response to your comments, is what you're saying?
Yes, is my understanding now, yeah. If it's anybody else's comments.
From, from what was sent to the board.
Well, I was looking at the ones from Friday.
Yeah, and those are, those are the same as version, the ones labeled version one and two that I provided.
Yeah, once you equate version one and two to the two versions from Friday, then you get there.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I've summarized one and two and as, as Commissioner DeBonne noted, based on the commissioners' individual reviews of those, I guess, on Friday or over the weekend. There have been some suggested changes from one commissioner and that is version three.
To go back to two miles instead of one mile.
Yep, so the two statements I had sent was, you know, one or two miles probably is negligible and I'm glad we have the, kind of the diagram showing that right now. So I, I didn't get to the concept that we needed to limit that footprint. And then also a person having to work for the employer that owns the property, I didn't support that specifically, you know, so these are, I think there was guesstimates about what might be supported or not, so I just wanted to make it real clear. It's like, oh, no, neither one of those were issues for me, so that's how we got to that with some feedback.
If I may, I think that one of the, the primary issues is the definition of employee in this case and what does that include? Does that include, you know, there's options of a one mile or two mile radius, does that include, is the intent to include only those working for kind of Sun River and its associated businesses? Or something for the commissioners to consider is, do they want that to include, you know, individual employees, Joe's Rafting, what have you? Or do you want it to be limited to just the large employers like Sun River? And that's what these versions attempt to get at.
And I would absolutely support having this housing opportunity for any, you know, tourist vacation related business in that two mile radius. I mean, that's a wonderful opportunity for any small business associated, if that room is available, to be able to, you know, get that next employee in some housing.
So I have a couple of questions. Why did we take out the eighteen years of age or older? Are we going to have sixteen year olds or is that legally required or what's?
I was suggesting, that, that issue came up in the public hearing. I could let the applicant specifically address that if they'd like. It was just, I believe it was in response to concerns of why, why is there an age limit?
I don't know who raised that concern.
I believe it was Ms. Gould. It was Ms. Gould.
Well, I think the reason there's an age limit is because we're not, you can't even rent to people sixteen, can you? I don't think they can form a contract.
I think you're right. I think they could void contracts, but I suppose you could rent to them if you're willing to do that with that risk, that they could subsequently get out from under it. But I'm not familiar enough with the residential renting rules.
So I guess I, I'm not as concerned about taking that out. I, so that's one that I have. I'm kind of mixed on the mileage limit myself too. I, it doesn't seem like two miles goes much further than one mile if we're using mileage as a, I mean, I don't see really very many businesses that would. It goes across the tip of Crosswater and I don't know if there's any other businesses that are in that circle. Maybe there's something in, there's some homeowner associations and neighborhoods, but it, and maybe it has Thousand Trails. It looks like it might hit Thousand Trails if I'm not mistaken, but is that, that would be the only thing I see there. So I, I'm kind of, I'll just go through my thoughts on this. I don't think it has to be just employers over fifty. I wasn't really, I guess that's the way they were identifying Sun River Resort, but I, I would, what, got thinking about a different idea, which is what if we said that only, no more than twenty-five percent of the employees should work at the Sun River Resort or Mount Bachelor. So we, my concern is if, if you do what you're saying, Commissioner DeBonne, we're basically creating a new housing for whoever wants it. And I know this owner doesn't want to do that, but the next lot over could with this text amendment. If all of a sudden, I mean, you could basically build multifamily housing now, in my opinion, based on this text amendment. And I don't think that, we've had a hearing on whether we should have multifamily housing in the business park and I, maybe we should, maybe we should have five multifamily, but I, we haven't really done that. What we've said and we've, I think we've, are all supportive of is an employer-based housing. So I'm concerned that it not just be wide open, that there be some limitation. I didn't like the idea that they were just limited to Mount Bachelor employees or Sun River employees because there may be an economic need to have some extra rentals, but we don't want to turn it into an automatic multifamily. So that was one thing I thought of over the weekend as a way to, you know, monitor that or distinguish it from the next parcel over coming in and building. I mean, because this doesn't just apply to one property, it's the whole business park, so that was my concern.
An employer, employing, employer has the authority, the opportunity to build this facility.
Right.
And fifty full or part-time employees within the Sun River urban unincorporated community. I mean, it limits it.
Well, but I don't really like that you have to have fifty, because I like the idea of there may be partners with, with Sun River that, you know, that they may.
So you're saying you support another, I mean, it would open it up more by what you're proposing, you're saying.
Right.
See, I, yeah, I'm, I'm, right.
Oh, okay, I thought you were going the other way.
No, I'm, I'm saying, I'm open to having non-resort, non-Mount Bachelor people living there. I just don't want.
That's the employee, yeah.
Yeah, those are the employees, but I'm also willing to have employees from other businesses. I just don't think they should, that should be the primary goal of one of these housing projects. So I thought, well, what about putting just a restriction on the percent that could be from other businesses? So that it gives some flexibility to the, the, the primary developer and it gives some needs for housing, but it doesn't turn it into immediately a multifamily housing project, which we haven't had a hearing on. You see what I'm saying? That's, that's my, my idea for today. I also, I also think we should, it doesn't make sense we call out Mount Bachelor Ski and Summer Resort and not Sun River. I mean, this is done for Sun River. We're not doing this for anybody and the entities may change. Well, then we could change the text amendment, but, I mean, it's, the one thing we're doing, we're not saying in the text, so it doesn't make sense to me.
Do you mean in, in section one?
Yeah.
I think the intent is that the first, the first part of that, in or within one mile or two miles, whichever it is, is because Sun River essentially includes Caldera Springs.
I know, but why don't we call them out? It's their project. It's their project, so it's.
Well, I think because.
You came up with that idea, but I, to me, I, the point we're doing this, I mean, they've, they're the pioneer here creating it, so I think we call that out and put it in there, you know, as, there's three definitions then of employer. It's Sun River Resort, or whatever the official name is, or Mount Bachelor Ski and Summer Resort, or whatever those, you know, however you say it, maybe it's first is the one mile, but put it in, I would put it in there. I don't think we're, it just doesn't make sense that it's not in there to me.
So your idea is to have the one, a radius, Mount Bachelor, and Sun River?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's my idea, that's just because it calls them out.
Well, yeah, I came in, I'm here to support, this is a legislative amendment, so it's, you know, for anybody and everybody with this kind of narrowing effect for referring to 50 employers with 50 or more employees. Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not real excited about changing the text again today, but if we get real clear on what we're doing.
Actually, the only, the issue that I had the problem with was the parking, and I don't understand why we're requiring three beds when it is in our county code that it's six beds. And that has not been touched, but it's said that when they're, if they do more phases, that it can be reevaluated. But I'm just wondering, you know, why are we making it three when our code says six? So, and I know to change it to six, that's, needs unanimous support. So, anyway, I'm just on the record as, why are we doing three?
Well, it doesn't have to be three, that's just what somebody put in, it could be four, it could be, it could be six. I think that they're just being pushed, the only real opposition.
The planning commission was apprehensive, because originally it was one per 10, per their historic data. So they, that's why they were concerned about it, but going below what's in county code of six seems to me to be, you know, 100% beyond. You know, it could be six. And I don't, the way it is termed now, because what if Sun River Resort is sold and someone names it Mount Bachelor Resort? You know, I mean, that's more than unlikely to happen, but I feel like defining it within the Sun River, I feel like that general description is more applicable to what could happen.
Well, why are we calling out Mount Bachelor Ski and Summer Resort? What if it's sold?
Well, that's the.
Or at, it says at the ski.
It's the name of the mountain.
It's the mountain name. I don't think they'll change the mountain name, will they? Or at Mount Bachelor.
Well, I see what you're saying. I guess, I don't quite understand, if it's sold, I mean, then it's divided up, then that's a different thing. I mean, maybe they aren't going to be in the employee business, employee shelter business either. But anyway, but I don't like that the only people that they could have would be the, from employers of 50 people or more necessarily, if we're gonna, I don't know, unless everybody wants that. I, it just seems to me if you're building this, there would be legitimate chances that that might be valuable, valuable to the owner.
And I might make a statement of, you know, support. As I say, the version three was feedback saying, let's go back to two miles. There really isn't much to changes, because the rural residential neighborhoods, you know, there could be a, you know, a business base somewhere, but it would just be the location of a business in support of the recreational activities. So that's the two miles. And then opening it up to employees other than the resort employees is kind of the good generic way. So as I say, I'm showing support for version three as it's written, going back to two miles and employees of any company in the area, and we could be there today.
So what, why did you add the, why'd you take out for an employer as defined below? I mean, because that's why we have a definition. Why did you want to strike that?
Well, that's.
And I think it needs to be in there.
Means if we can help. Oh, because, yeah, it just keeps it generic. So you're either working in the hospitality, food and beverage, outdoor recreation industry or not, so not for an employer. That is the statement, for an employer referring to the one that built the property. So that's why that pulls that out.
So why do we still have the definition of employer, then?
Because it gives the authority for that employer to build the facility. An employer that has more than 50 full or part-time employees has this authority, has this opportunity.
It's, but the only time the word is in there after that, where its definition is, is about, it must be operated by an employer. So it must be, so you're saying you want it in there because we want somebody with more than 50 employees to run the housing structure?
Well, that, that gives the opportunity to, you know, limit a person coming in from anywhere and doing this.
Right.
It doesn't if you take out for an employer as defined below.
No, well, that's just employee that has the opportunity to live there. An employee.
Do you see what I'm saying, though? The only reason that we have, there's two reasons we have the definition of employer in this. One is to help define what an employee is, and the other is to say who must run the employee housing structure. If you take out that phrase, the only reason we have employer is so that we're saying employee housing structure must be operated by an employer. But you're, by taking it out, you're saying anybody can work, live there that's within two miles or at Mount Bachelor. Is that what you're intending?
And working for hospitality, food, beverage, outdoor recreation tourism.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. Yeah, so I'm not in favor of that. That, to me, becomes mass, you know, a multi, basically, it could be anything. It's just an apartment, it can become an apartment complex. And we haven't had a hearing on whether we should have apartments in that business park. We, we've had a hearing on whether we could have this dormitory concept, which I think is great. So, yeah, I can't, I can't support that.
Well, it's employee housing for somebody that is working. And the, it's, the starting point is those summertime peak workers coming in from outside the area without a vehicle. I mean, I'm just thinking the scenario at the start of this process.
And the need.
Yeah, and the need, I mean, that's the exciting part. If we get here, you know, as I say, I'm showing support for this enthusiastically now, but if we get here, this is a great opportunity to, you know, free up those other home rentals that are happening in the area, too. I mean, there's a lot of good things about this.
The unintended consequences of having to rent in the community instead of having dormitory housing for workers that realize it's, you know, it's a summer job. It's a great summer job. And, you know, the location for access to their employment is something that's, it's a win-win. It's a win for the employers and the employee.
And we were provided the zoning district, Sun River Business Park Zone. There are about five or six parcels that are empty, that, and probably only a couple of them would or could be an opportunity like this. One is specifically by the applicant, so there's really only about three more that, even if somebody really got aggressive to do this, and it's limited just the, you know, large employers in that geographic area. Because that's where I was stumbling.
My point is you can tear down any of those. I mean, there may be only two or three lots, but if you also now put this, you could put five or 10 of these in there if that's a good, and it may be a good thing, but that isn't what we had a hearing on. I guess that's my concern. We, we're trying to create some, a text amendment that works for this particular concept, but it wasn't just to add housing of any kind in there, which maybe, I might support that, I just, we haven't had any testimony about that, so I guess that's my, I can't support it.
Planning Commission just about got there and stopped with the parking issue, which was kind of a balance issue. But, I mean, they were talking employee housing this whole time. This whole thing has been about employee housing.
Right.
I know, do you have any concern, though, about how this plays out? It's a text amendment, so other people can operate on, under it in the future.
No, you know, the employer being defined as within the Sun River Urban Unincorporated Community with 50 employees, full or part-time. I mean, that, it just narrows it way down.
Definitely the 50 or, 50 full or part-time does narrow it.
So I don't know, who wants to, from staff or legal wants to, am I not correct that with, if we take out the clause for an employee as defined below in item number one, the only place that employer is now relevant is in who must operate the business?
I believe that's the case, yeah.
So, a large, yeah, so a large apartment complex builder with 50 or more employees can build a building like this. It doesn't have anything to do with who lives there, it just has to do with who operates it now, and that's why taking it out.
But they would have to be an employer with a home base in the Sun River Urban Unincorporated Community. That's the other part of this clause.
Within one mile, right. Adam, do you have a clarification on that?
Yeah, there's definitely, the two different pieces there are, and the two different options are intentional. Option one would be, there's a limitation on the employers, and the employers are relevant because those are the entities that have to operate the dormitory. And then, so under one option, any employee that meets the definition of working for hospitality, food, beverage, and outdoor recreation or tourism industry within the either one or two miles of those distances can live in that dormitory. And then the second option, as Commissioner Henderson has articulated, is limiting the dormitory to only employees of the employer who is operating the dormitory. So those are, those options are being presented to the board, and I think the understanding of the different versions is correct.
I think Commissioner Henderson is extrapolating that there may be an opportunity for a, an apartment developer to come in and build an apartment in another empty parcel there, which I don't see that opportunity.
Well, but there is, as long as an employer runs it, operates it, might not rock, correct?
I think it would come down to whether or not that meets the definition of employee housing structure, dormitory or multifamily dwelling. I mean, if, perhaps we can add additional language, trying to clarify what falls under employee housing structure.
Well, actually, version two, because of the clarification by you regarding the law, if, by, you know, fair housing, if that is, is that something that we, we do need to have in here?
Yes, I believe the applicant noted concerns, is why they initially had the language in the first proposal about spouses and children because of concerns with the Fair Housing Act. So we, to preserve that issue as a potential issue that may or may not come up in the future, we just added that provision, that employee spouse, partner, or minor children should only be allowed if compelled by state or federal law.
Does state or federal law compel it?
Neither the applicant or, we haven't had time to dig into the Fair Housing Act and see if it applies to a dormitory structure. I suspect it probably could.
I would, to the extent it does apply, if it does, it's going to apply independent of what our code amendment says.
So if it's there or not, yeah.
It would operate independent, whether we have that in there or not, so.
I would agree with that.
So, when you say we've limited by the, how the employee housing structure should mean a dormitory, whatever that means, or multifamily dwelling, which, to be, I thought these were going to be single rooms, basically. So how is it a multifamily dwelling?
Well, this, this is the kind of the generic legislative process, which gives the authority for an applicant to say, this is, now this is the kind of building I would like to build. So it's like we're not at that step yet.
Really, there's no restriction on rooms here at this point, it could be a. I'm just kind of trying to make the text amendment match the proposal, which was basically, as I understood it, individual rooms for like a dormitory. Like, we know as dormitory in college where there's one or two people, or multifamily says something different to me. Does anybody have thoughts on that?
I would just point out, this is a continued public hearing, so perhaps when Chair calls for testimony from the applicant, anybody else that's interested, that you might get some more on that.
Okay.
Could we get some more testimony about some of these comments?
Yeah, this is a, this is a continuation of your public hearing, and certainly the applicants and anyone interested would have an opportunity to speak again.
So, is, is there anyone that does want to address this issue for us, please? Do you want to step up to the microphone, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Steve Holberg. For the record, in with me is Tom O'Shea. I'll just start by saying, I know it is a little bit confusing that there are three versions out there. We support any of them because they all get us to the point where we need to be. I do think version three, if I had to select, would probably be the one that I would most support at this point. The reason that we put the employer definition in there was to restrict who can actually build and operate these things, right? So you have to have someone willing to commit to a large investment, they have to be a large employer in the county. 50 employees is a pretty significant threshold, especially in the, in the Sun River Urban Unincorporated area. So you're limited right there by who can operate and build these things. And you're also limited by the number of available spots that are in there. I find it very hard to believe that someone's going to tear down a grocery store and gas station to put up a money-losing venture of employee housing. But if that's the case.
Dormitory housing, yes.
Dormitory housing, but if that's the case, that's, that is the case. And, but the restriction, again, is that an employer has to make that investment into the community, and that's what this really is about. With restrictions on employees in terms of age, we did hear comments about, well, why restrict it? I'm pretty sure Tom's going to testify that they have no desire to rent to any minor children at all, but that should be in there. It's just, it's an available option. And then, with respect to employees, I really support Commissioner DeBonne's thinking on this. That is, you should not restrict a dormitory to the employees solely of that employer. For the reason, A, Mount Bachelor, that is one potential pool of employees. But there also may be other housing needs, where Sun River Resort has some openings, and Sun River Brewing says, God, we are dying for five spots in the winter. Can we get those spots from you? That's a good, that's a good result. It's not, and it's not multifamily housing that's outside of the context. They still have to be employees, they have to be employees in the area, so it's not open to just anyone. And through conditions of approval, through the site plan review, you can, you can instill reporting requirements. You know, every year, report to us who your employees are, or how many employees you have, who's living there. Those are the kind of things that you can do. And again, there are code enforcement mechanisms if someone is not obeying, you know, obeying the law. I think we have tried to keep this in some general respect, that it is open to other employers. I don't support limiting this just to Sun River Resort. I don't, I don't think that is necessarily an appropriate use of the code in terms of spot zoning. But the limitations that we have with employers and employees really limits who can build. employees really limits who can build these things and who can live in these things. And then, Commissioner Henderson, you're concerned about multifamily dwellings. That gets down to, in my mind, while the dormitory issue is certainly what is, is planned, we may find in 10 years that, you know what, they need studio apartments. No one's going to come here unless they need studio apartments, right? That's just creating some flexibility in here. It doesn't change the operation of the facility in any, in any manner. All it means is a person then has their own private space rather than sharing a space with four other people. It's a larger investment that someone's going to have to make, and the likelihood that it happens is actually fairly low because of that reason alone. But we're trying to create some flexibility, so we're not in here in three years saying, oh, gosh, we should have changed this definition. But I think the parameters that we have to operate, the resort has to operate in, are very, very limited. With respect to parking, we would support anything that the Board thinks is appropriate.
I just feel like, why would you, why should yours be, you know, half of what we allow for any other dormitory? So, anyway, that's my little parking issue, because I know most of them will have bikes, and they, we have that bus service that's going to be running the first of June, so, to, you know, in the, in that community.
So, I mean, in some ways, so from my perspective, you're kind of confirming what I was concerned with, is that in 10 years, you might decide you need studios. Well, you might decide you need two-bedroom apartments. So you remodel the whole thing, and it becomes a multifamily structure. I don't feel like we had really, and it may be that we need regional housing down, I mean, it might, it might be profitable, as well as needed, for 500 employees in the, not just the resort, but every business that they have in the whole region, even in the business park, the brewing, the school, you know, whatever. People could work, you know, this fire department down the road, whatever. It may be that we need it. I just don't feel like we really had a full hearing on that concept. And so, that's, it concerns me. It's really, and I said this the first time it came up, it's really more of a regional housing complex, which may be great, and maybe that's what they did in, when Gilcrest was built, and Gilcrest built, you know, there was a forest timber company, and they built housing for their employees, or when, you know, I'm familiar with farmers building farm housing, they don't rent to whoever. So I missed, to me, the real brilliance of this was the idea of employer housing for their employees, not, so I don't know, I'm kind of struggling with that, idea of regional housing, and whether people, and I, I may come out that I've totally favored, I just haven't thought about or heard anything about it.
Commissioner Henderson, the concern about not having a hearing on it, multifamily housing has been in the definition since day one. It was before the planning commission for those two hearings, has been in the text before you for, for two hearings as well. And again, it, it's not changing the use, it's changing the structure. It still has to be occupied by an employee, it still has to be operated by an employer.
There's lots of employees. I mean, that's what I'm saying. There's probably, there are 500 or 1,000 employees that fit hospitality, food and beverage, outdoor recreation, and tourism. I mean, there's, I'm sure, I mean, I'm not just worried that there'll be unemployed people, there, there's lots of employees. The whole thing could be rented to employees. It could, probably the don't even work for Sun River, be my guess. I mean, now they're commuting from Le Pine and Bend and stuff. The other, those employees that all work down there, the people that clean, the people that work in the restaurants, the tourism people, the stores, I mean, so I, it's a very broad definition, which is fine, I'm just...
Again, let me just address the goal, okay? There's a chronic shortage of workforce housing. Quite frankly, I'm not concerned about what provisions you put in there as to how we use it. I just want to run my business. We're short-staffed all through the summer, 30, 40, 50 people. Our plan is to have, maybe do it in two phases, but eventually we need probably up to about 180 beds, not necessarily start out that way. So I don't see a whole lot of availability for using it for anybody other than our employees. As I said originally, when we thought about, well, what would we do in the, in the off-season, I was, I had a meeting with John McLeod at Mount Bachelor, and just said to him, in the event that we were to do this, would they be interested? And he said, oh, yeah, I think there would be. That's the extent, we keep talking about Mount Bachelor, that's the extent of the conversation that has been with Mount Bachelor. We're doing this for Sun River Resort. Sun River Resort SRFP encompasses the resort, Caldera Springs, and Crosswater. That's the business, that's the ownership group. So anybody that works in those entities, we bring in, every year, we hire somewhere in the region of 500 to 550 people. Last year, of that 550, 130 from out of state. And, and we, as we continue to grow our business and grow our year-round business, we see even a greater need for employees. If, if it's decided that we should not have the ability to, let's say, and another property management company has a need to bring in people from out of state and would like to use our facility, if this board decides that's not appropriate, that's fine. But it's, but I want you to think of the community. You have somewhere in the region of 1,400 homes that are being rented. Of those 1,400, we have 308, I believe. So those employers are going to have difficulty finding labor also. I know because they use ours. So the question is, you know, is it a bad thing if somebody who has 100 homes that their, people are using as retirement income, whatever, and they hire a property management company to rent those, and they come to us and say, would you be willing to let us use 10 of your rooms? The chances are, the question would be no, because the demand would be the same time, which would be the summer. We won't have availability in the summer. We're going to have those units filled with our employees. Now, if you talk about off-season, we're still going to have a use for it, but it's not going to be at the same level. I mean, if you look at occupancy levels, you can go from a month of February, where our business versus July, it's six times the volume. High business day in the summer, 18,000 people at the resort. Take that into January, February, it's probably less than 1,000. So the reality of it is, this, the business need here is that we have that period of time, and we cannot find staff. We simply cannot, and we can't find housing. Our business is being defined by, I'll hire you if I can find a place for you to live. That's the issue, and that's the only thing I'm asking for.
Tom, how long have you been dealing with this, this crisis in your industry?
Basically, it started when the economy returned, you know, I mean, it returned with the bang, probably now about five years. I mean, as I said, every year, we're anticipating an additional $50,000 to $100,000 in expense on this. I'd rather spend that money on employee benefits, not on housing costs that are exorbitant. $75,000 a month's a lot for housing. And it's subsidized. I mean, it's not, this is not something I would even attempt to do if it wasn't for the shortage. I mean, this is not, this is a overhead cost for us. This is an expense. It's a $4 million investment at a minimum with ongoing costs to run it. So I'd say, just want to make sure everybody aware of, this is not going to go away, whether you approve it or not. You're going to still have a chronic problem with housing, whether it's not just in South County either, it's throughout the whole, it's throughout Central Oregon.
Yeah, Commissioner Henderson, one of the, I'm sorry if I interrupted.
No, that's fine.
One of the things we talked a little bit about last week that didn't make it into the amendments, that maybe addresses your concern, is, Tom has testified, he, there's no desire to just put an ad in Craigslist and get employees in the area. I, I can see how that might be a concern of yours, Commissioner Henderson. One way to restrict that would be to have a provision in the code that says, for non-employees of the employer, there has to be a formal agreement with another employer, right? So that means if Bennington Property Management says, look, we need 15 places, okay, that's an agreement between the resort and Bennington Property Management. It's not just Joe's Raph shop down the way. It's got, it has to be some sort of agreement between two, two employers.
Yeah, I get that. I mean, I, I'd like that. I, you know, I'm just, I get the intent of, at this time and place, in this particular situation with this ownership group, et cetera. Tom is the, you know, managing partner of the whole project. My concern is that even though it sounds like your biggest concern is the three or four months where you have rental needs, and you're paying premium for those, I don't know that the dollars you spend in those four months is more than the dollars you could earn if you rented units all year long. So just on a straight money basis, somebody else, somewhere else could say, wait a minute, if I can do, use this code, we could, you know, I could build this structure, and I'm not worried about summer housing like you are. That's, that's my concern, and that's why I said, well, if we limit it to 25% or something, it would make sense. But that, because I don't, I just don't feel we vetted that concept. We've, and then I don't like it being called or multifamily, because I didn't think that was what we were doing either. I thought we really were doing individuals you're bringing in from foreign countries, or college students, et cetera, and that's your basic need. I don't know, I'm just...
And that is the need. Multifamily just describes the type of structure, both under the county's development code and building code. So a multifamily structure is nothing more than a building with several dwelling units in it. And so, that could be a unit or a structure with 12 studio units, or a structure with two six-room dormitories. It's the same structure, it's the same use, it's just a matter of how people are, are living in that structure. It doesn't change anything else.
Is, is there a definition of multifamily somewhere that...
I believe your code has it, and the building code certainly does.
According to my notes from the last meeting, Mr. O'Shea testified that you're, like, renting those units for the employees for six months, and that's taking those units out of the, you know, the availability for other people, actually, to rent them. And it's costing, you know, what is it, $450,000? Something in that neighborhood for 25 homes?
I mean, it's...
It's a significant...
On average, it's $3,000 a month per unit.
Right.
And if you look at 20, that's $75,000 a month. I, I'm not opposed to a restriction in regard to, if we want to keep in there that it can be rented to other employers. I, I support the idea that's the employer, not the individual, that we would be, if we were, if we had chose to do that. And I have no problem with there being a percentage restriction, because I know that the chances of them being available are slim.
Slim.
Because we, we wouldn't be building them if we didn't need them. Not, I'm not, I don't want to, and we say multifamily, I understand, and I, whatever's required, legal code and whatever, what needs to be in the text amendment. But again, I've never, in the 12 years I've been at Sun River, hired somebody who brought their family with them and said, I'd like you to provide housing. I mean, that's not...
That's what I thought. I mean, that's why I thought it was all single room.
Basically, it's all single rooms. These are, for the most part, international students, and of course, significant US students, people who want to come on internships. They don't bring their family with them. You know, people that we hired at, have families, have families that are living here, they might live at home. But, so this is strictly to, it's a labor issue more than anything.
Well, could it read, shall mean a dormitory-type dwelling whose primary purposes serve the housing needs of employees?
It could say dormitory or similar structure, absolutely.
Yeah.
At least sets the goal as different than opening up for others or similar structure, okay. And you had in, you mentioned your first line was that your goal was to have employers build and operate these structures. Could we include that, employee housing structures must be built and operated by an employer?
Well, it, to me, it's operation, built, I mean, that gets into the question of who's actually building the thing. I mean, I don't, operation is, to me, the key thing, whether it's owned by, you know, some LLC, but operated by Sun River Resort, or operated by Sun River Brewing, for example. I, I don't think who builds the structure really...
That's not the key part.
No, it's make, it's who's actually operating it.
That protects the amendment by saying who's, excuse me, who's operating it. So if the burden goes back to you, not only do you find the employees, but you have housing that you provide, you subsidize, and then you actually operate it just to protect the, the community. It's your community.
Well, I like your suggestion of having a, the employee, agreement with the employer and to do rentals. Do you, either of you like that idea?
Well, that was brought up previously, yeah, so I understand the concept.
Would you support that?
Well, as I say, my starting point is this version three, and you're in a spot to be able to say, you know, if we want to get somewhere, those are the proposals you're making. So, I mean, if that's going to get us down the line here, as I say, and now I'm becoming an advocate for it, because I'm, I'm liking this idea.
So you're actually, you're working on vision, version three, then?
Yeah, I'm looking at version three, I'm just adding that to it, just like we did shall mean a dormitory or dormitory-type.
Or similar structure.
Or similar structure.
Similar structure.
Okay. So we could modify it with...
Proceedurally, this is a public hearing, we've heard some great feedback, we've had great discussion. But yeah, so now, yeah, how we, how do we get to, yeah.
Delivering as we go, yeah.
How do we get to closure here?
What's your feeling about not being specifically identified? Is that, I mean, I don't know where that came from, that, I'd actually thought you were identified, so I didn't realize and tell to, you know, I reread it, that...
I mean, in my, in my view, it is, it is to allow for another large employer in the unincorporated community to provide housing. If there is a need and there is an employer that needs employee housing, that should be open to them.
Are there, are there any employers that have more than 50 employees in, in the two miles?
The brewery?
My guess is that the Owners Association.
Yeah, again, it depends on some of the larger property management companies for, not year-round, but they might during, the definite details as to how you define 50, during the summer period, it's possible that that could happen. But again, looking at the economics of this, I don't think there's going to be anybody lining up to get your permission to build one of these things anytime soon. But, but I understand the need to protect the amendment.
When I was in law school, we lived in these things called quads, and they were, they weren't as big as what you're proposing. It was like a three or four-story building with four rooms on each floor and a kitchen. So I guess that would, that would qualify, so we could do a smaller version of what you're doing, but...
We want to make it attractive and comfortable, and as I've said before, I mean, especially with college students, the word gets out pretty fast, that's whether, you know, they have multiple places they can go. They go work for Disney, they can work anywhere they want. And so we're, that's what, that's, at the college level, that's what we're competing with. And it's, and it, as I said, and it helps the entire community, because our, a lot of these staff, they work, they'll work two or three jobs. And we don't object to them working for other companies, even though it's on our, we're basically paying the cost. But it's fine, it's all good for the community.
So, do we need to hear any other comments from the public at this moment? Okay.
While you're still here, what was your thought on the bike? There'd been requests that there'd be a bike spot for every bed or whatever, and now it's one space for two beds. I don't know how frequent bike...
I mean, I walk over to the business park all the time, you know, it's really a short walk, especially from the village.
So is that what people would do, you think, is a lot of people...
You could walk up by the high school there, because we run, that's where we run the half marathon. You can, you can come up there, up that road by the high school. It's not the height of the school, and then under the bridge, and you're in Sun River. So you don't even have to go near the traffic. You can actually avoid the traffic out of the business park if you want to.
What, what do you think of whether one spot for every two beds is enough? Is that, will, be more bikes than that?
I would approach, I would approach bikes and parking the same way. Have, put in whatever you feel is a reasonable amount, and then monitor it. And if all of a sudden we're seeing bikes on top of each other, and we got, then we add to it. I mean, and you make it, and you make that a provision, that if there's inadequate biking or parking, that we are obligated to add to it, to meet the net, to meet the standard. We provide bicycles to all of those folks if they want them. They enjoy riding around Sun River. But if it's an area that's within, with our housing, we'll just pick them up if it's too far, we find it unsafe for them to be out there. But I'm okay with having a provision on both biking and parking.
And again, the, the parking was taken from your parking, the bike parking was taken from your code. And I can't remember what I tied it to, but I think it was multifamily housing, or something similar to that. So that's, that's where that comes from.
The one to two?
Yeah, I'd have to look it up, but that's...
Tonya, is it one to two, do you remember?
It's one to two in the code here, and I believe that's where.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we do have citizen input, Nancy Gold? So, we do have citizen input, Nunzi Gould.
Good morning, my name is Nunzi Gould. This text amendment is requesting an outright use of this, and typically, conditions of approval are not tied to outright uses. So, I think we've heard, you know, we could report on things, you could make something a condition of approval, but that's not what this new language is asking. This new language is asking to be an outright use. Um, we've also heard the word own, operate, or build in the, in the language here. The text in your code only refers to the word operate. So, if your intention is to have the employer own it, then that should be stated in this, in my opinion, because there won't be conditions of approval when these come in, because it's being applied for as an outright use. From my calculation, there are about 20 acres of unbuilt land in the Sun River Business Park. This text amendment doesn't limit it to the property that is the, uh, tree central area that's owned by the resort that this is being supported for. So, that's really what, what got me to participate early on is what's the cumulative impact of this? And has it been discussed, quantified, or the implications of this thought about? So, one thing is to look at where simple things are. We have a term called social equity. When you have your employees walking to their destination, are they just walking in a street because there are no sidewalks in the business park? That's an example of infrastructure and what we're asking people to do if you neither have a parking space nor have a bicycle space. I do believe Sun River Resort does an excellent job with their bicycle infrastructure, and I do believe that housing at this location will likely use bicycles. I'm not sure that anybody is going to want to walk a mile to where Mount Bachelor picks up from this location, and, uh, in the wintertime, I think that's an important consideration. Uh, right now, there is no Mount Bu, Bachelor shuttle bus to where those employees are in the summertime. So, I'm just mindful about the totality of this. We're trying to get transit onboard, we're trying to diminish the vehicles driving up and down to Mount Bachelor, uh, wintertime and summertime. So, is there something that we could contribute, an in-lu fee for our CET, for instance? Or to get another summertime shuttle bus to this large employer out Mount Bachelor? So, those are some of kind of the social equity things that I think haven't been vetted through this, but as this text amendment is written, look at all the tree area to the left of the railroad tracks within this red boundary. That's potential land where this could occur. In addition, in addition to the property that's more central, you can see where the sidewalks are in front of the school, that's the extent of the sidewalks in the business park. So, in terms of where are we placing people who we value in our community, how are we developing out this community? I understand the need for housing. I do believe that a large, multiple-family dwelling entity could possibly own this. So, I, I still see there's a systems disconnect between it being, uh, resort-owned or Mount Bachelor-owned. I don't see that written at all in this text amendment now. So, the follow-up and the management of it is, how does the county really know who's living there, who's working there? And again, I support providing a variety of housing opportunities within our community. I think they need to be thought through, because the Sun River UUC is not the only UUC in our community. And the destination resorts that are occurring in our rural areas are demanding labor and housing, whether it's, uh, at the Business Park in Bend to support, uh, Pronghorn Resort, or whether it's at the Industrial and Business Park in Redmond to support Eagle Crest Resort. This is a, this is a, a model that will be templated for, and for that, I, I support that services be available and that we don't isolate or marginalize those who actually make our communities function. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Tanya? Let's see, where are we at now?
I work at the board's direction, uh, there can be, uh, a hearing could be closed, you can, uh, do many option, I don't know if you want to pull, uh, ask the applicant to respond to any of that, or?
Would you like to? Okay, that'd be great. Thanks, Steve.
Again, for the record, Steve Holtberg. Ms. Gould suggested that conditions of approval can't be applied for an outright permitted use, that is simply wrong. This has to go through site plan review. Site plan review, in my experience, I have never had site plan review that doesn't have about 50 conditions attached to it. Conditions are always attached to site plan review regardless of whether it is a permitted use or whether it is a conditional use. You can, you can apply conditions to meet the approval criteria. Uh, in terms of ownership and operation, I, again, my testimony earlier was, I don't think it matters if it is Joe Smith LLC who owns it, it is, has to be operated by an employer. That's the key piece. Who owns it, I think, is entirely irrelevant to, to the discussion. The last comment was marginalizing people and where we put them in the community. I would counter Ms. Gould's testimony by saying, we marginalize people when we throw them in any available housing anywhere in the community and give them no means to get to anywhere. This is a centrally-located, uh, place, it is near services, it is near the resort, it is near pretty much the central part of the, the town center of resort. Uh, this is not marginalizing people, it is putting them in a place that is appropriate for that. So, with that, I'll conclude my testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner's staff have been working here, uh, and I believe Adam has a, our joint product that might reflect, uh, the version three with the suggestion for some edits that the commissioners, perhaps he could share that and see if we're getting close at least.
Thank you.
So, um, I would propose moving the parking requirements, so I'm working off of version three, uh, and I would propose moving the parking requirements to subsection five and adding a new subsection four immediately under three, which says employee housing structures must be operated by an employer. And admittedly, the, the, it's a bit convoluted just because of employee, employer, and those defined terms, but it's important to keep within those defined terms. So, the new subsection four could be employees as defined above, who are not employed by an employer as defined above, may only reside in an employee housing structure if the employee's employer has a signed housing agreement with the employer operating the structure. And I think that would, uh, address the, uh, the, the agreement language while still using the, uh, specifically defined terms. And then, uh, last remaining question is, uh, if we're leaving the multifamily dwelling language, are changing that to shall mean a dormitory, um, or other similar structure?
Does Nick have an opinion on that, or similar structure, Nick?
I think it's or similar dwelling structure.
A similar dwelling structure?
Dave, do you have any concerns about the presidential, um, impact of this? I mean, um, there is a lot of, a fair amount of vacant law, land there.
I mean, that's always a concern, Commissioner, but certainly the restrictions on the employer piece are going to greatly limit the, the universe of people that, that would have the ability to, to utilize this. And then whether there's a business need for it as well, would also be more limiting. I, I certainly, as Ms. Gould indicated, think this could become something that has applicability adjacent to some of the other, um, destination resorts, uh, those types, and, and not that Sun River is a destination resort, but it's akin to that. So, yeah, I could see it, it, it having some applicability there, but again, it would require a text amendment, because this is site-specific, so while this would be a model that folks would pivot off of, this is site-specific to the Sun River Business Park. So, you couldn't just take it and apply it immediately over, um, at Eagle Crest or Pronghorn or any of the other places.
Some reasons for this is there's, there's little industrial-type land in this region, we're 15 miles from Bend, we're 20 miles from La Pine, so there is nowhere else for people to live, ex, you know, they rent houses now to put them up, and whereas the other resorts maybe aren't as remote, some of them anyway. What about?
It seems like, you know, a real, a real good effort to, to address a problem and an issue, and it's, uh, staff's work to, to help with the applicant to keep it as tightly confined as possible, so that it doesn't have unintended consequences that the board and, and the applicant and staff and the public haven't really maybe seen, and there's no guarantees that there aren't some unintended consequences or applications that were not seen, but I think we've done our, our best to try to anticipate and limit those.
Tanya, could I just ask one, which, which lot number is it? I know it's 3.25 acres.
I think it's 27.
Okay, it's the one in the middle then. Okay, all right, because I was just thinking about that. Okay.
Um, what about the issue of, um, you know, there's owned, built, and operated, as was brought up? I understand the issue of who builds it, doesn't have to be the employer, but what about ownership versus just operation? What do you, do you have any thoughts on that? I can kind of.
I think the, the ownership and operating is obviously going to keep it even more limited, make it a smaller universe of people that would qualify, and therefore, limit the unintended consequences or applications that we're not anticipating. Um, I think that was the intent, to make that as tight and, and Sun River Resort specific as possible. Um, because it's, it's quite an endeavor, there, there aren't going to be a whole lot of employers probably that can undertake something like that.
I kind of, okay, yeah, I kind of see owned as a, would be a good criteria. Built's a different thing, but if they own and operate it, it's very specific to that employer, anyway. Okay, are we done taking testimony, or?
I believe so. Is there any other further testimony at this time? Okay, so, the testimony will be closed then? Do we want to do deliberations now?
Well, I would do, I do support, uh, you know, closing the written in oral record, so, you know, confirming that this is the end of the testimony. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Making sure, you know, that step. And then, yeah, are we ready for deliberations, or Commissioner Henderson, do you want to come back with some specific words? As I say, I was, um, supporting this version three as, as provided at the beginning of the meeting. Um, there's been a request for it to be by emergency, uh, just for a construction cycle. Um, so if we're not all on the same page, and it's two to one vote, we're not going to get to emergency, just acknowledging that.
Yes.
So, I, I like the, the two amendments that I, I think you read two amendments, right? And I liked, I liked both of those, so I would support those. I, I guess I'm, now I'm questioning about, um, must be operator, I like the idea of owned and operated by an employer. But originally, that, that makes, that makes sense to me on this, I mean, maybe it'll turn out that isn't important, but, um, it does, it does secure our intent, which is that this resort, um, would, you know, build this, own it and operate it, so.
But then, do you have a problem with, if it's like one division within Sun River Resorts that actually owns it? I mean, does it have to be the same, um, business entity in order to own and operate it?
I don't know, the code speaks to that, that, I, I would imagine staff, if that were brought forth as some sort of code enforcement issue, would, would probably conclude that that meets the definition, if it's within the same general ownership umbrella.
Then it would be okay?
Yeah, I, well, I'm just assuming, I don't know until that issue, I mean, that's the problem, when you start drafting statute, if you could get lost in that rabbit hole and try to anticipate every possible scenario, and you're going to miss one, even if you do that, and you're going to have pages upon pages, and so, a lot of this gets left for subsequent code enforcement, uh, issues if, if something like that comes up.
Commissioner Adair, as you know, I mean, owner, ownership and, a situation like this could conceivably be, excuse me, could get complicated. I mean, I, it wouldn't be unheard of for an entity to create a, a sub-entity just for the ownership of the, uh, the structure itself. Certainly, that could be an interpretation issue going on. I do think operated is probably easier for us to put a finger on. Ownership would, as Commissioner Henderson noted, would, I mean, it would be an additional level of security, um, that would, uh, be a wrinkle that an entity would have to deal with. Just to reiterate, I don't think it's uncommon or unheard of at all that, uh, larger entity would spin off a separate, uh, business to just own, uh, for the ownership structure for liability reasons, if nothing else.
Right. Okay. So.
Well, so then, I'd, uh, yeah, this is a proposal for deliberation, and I mean, I, I would support having a, a final written version, and I, you know, it's a shame, I feel like we're negotiating words between three commissioners and a, uh, an applied text amendment here, so, I mean, get into a final version that we can point at.
I mean, that's exactly what we're doing, I mean, that's.
But, no, I don't want to call it final today if we don't know exactly what the final looks like, is, I guess where I'm getting.
I wouldn't mind, and I'd like to get it done today if it's, if we could, I mean, I know that the proponent is interested in that, and we've kind of, it feels like we vetted it, so it can't, couldn't we?
Could we adjourn for, for five minutes and have you print it out?
Yeah, I guess that's where I'm going.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, final printed.
Yes, we would like to see the.
I'm not sure about five minutes, but perhaps, uh.
Can?
Well, it's 11:30, we could set an hour for a lunch break and just get some things.
I was going to say, perhaps we could either set it to a time certain, let's say 12:30 or 1:00, or we could probably make it back in 30 minutes if we really hustle up. We'd want to put something together in a red line, vet it with the applicant's attorney also, and then bring it back to you folks and have it here.
I like that idea.
So, it, I don't know what your schedules are, if we could come back at 12:30, that would probably be best, but if you want us to.
12:30, is that okay for you guys?
Support one hour, yeah.
Okay, well, I thought five minutes, but, I'm an optimist.
And operated, or leaving that language as is?
What I think, to me, operated is adequate.
And I agree with that.
And I don't know, so, that's fine.
Why don't we draft one with owned and operated, and one with just operated, and bring those both back along with the other red lines? And we'll come back.
I just think the liability issue.
At 12:30.
Getting there.
12:30, okay.
We're in recess. Oh, we're not in recess.
Okay.
Yes, I know. It's just this issue, we're coming back at 12:30, or here? Yes, please.
And if the applicant isn't coming back, or, wait, oh, you.
Hey, oh, yeah, you got it.
Well, you'll be, this has been, this has been work. Um, you know, you're a model, so, hope it goes well. We, it sounds like we're going to approve this, so that's our goal.
I appreciate all, everybody's efforts on this, it's, uh, takes time to get it done sometimes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Whitney?
So, at this time, we're going to item 16?
Um, yes, we are now going to go to discussion of Senate Bill 1530, legislation.
Good morning, Whitney Hale, Administrative Services. We have two letters for the. We have two letters for the board that you actually saw yesterday that we wanted to bring back. We had minor changes after you looked at them. Laura can speak to the changes, which are minor, on the letter for 1530. And then we also had an update to a letter that pertains to House Bill 4014. So we can start things off with discussion on 1530.
Sure. So the only change on this bill, there is no change to the body of the letter. It was just the committee had changed since the letter was drafted on Friday. So just a different address on the letter, and we'll need a new signature on the fresh copy. So I'm happy to pass out copies if you guys would like to look at that. It's now in the Ways and Means Subcommittee on Natural Resources.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Yeah, so we'll...
If we can look at those. Thank you.
I guess that's what I guess the business is right now.
Yes.
And we're changing, a letter that we had discussed yesterday going to the Joint Committee on Ways and Means Subcommittee on Natural Resources in opposition to Senate Bill 1530.
Is there a second?
Is this exact, I didn't miss what you said. Is this exactly the same as what we looked at yesterday?
Yes, yeah, there were no changes to the body.
I thought we, I thought I signed this yesterday.
You did, but...
We had to change the parties.
The committee changed since the moment we signed it.
Right.
Oh.
It actually went to Ways and Means Subcommittee, Natural Resources.
Oh, I see, so that's what we're doing.
So we're just re...
Second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair does vote yes. Thank you very much.
And then on House Bill 4014, I sent a note yesterday. We saw that the dash six amendments were posted to that bill. And when we had drafted the letter yesterday, it referenced potential amendments that may be coming. The letter, we've revised it to reference the actual dash six amendments. So I'll go ahead and distribute this along with the dash six amendments.
So the letter yesterday said, please add these amendments. And now, and it happened the moment we signed it, it didn't even go.
That was excellent timing.
So remember, Doralee King, and she came in and spoke to us. So I sent her an email when we got this notification and said, here's, she wants a cluster development opportunity, but I said, well, here's a single, a sister dwelling unit that's being discussed. And she mentioned when she gets back from Italy, she's working on her cross-country skiing something, something, and she'll come back and be an advocate. It was just funny.
I called her this morning, too.
Oh, good, there you go.
Because I had her name incorrectly in my phone. It's Doralee with not a Dorali.
That's right.
Because I had it wrong. So, yes, okay.
We're both looking out for her.
I know, I know.
And she's been talking about this for years, so this is an opportunity.
I know. Well, there are definitely those people out there that are supportive. So the letter does not change, then, just the reference point?
Well, just the first sentence saying we're very supportive of the amendments, yeah.
Right.
Correct. And then I modified slightly the section of the original letter that referenced local control. That is still referenced in the, kind of the second half of the letter, but it's a little bit more brief of a mention than it was in the original letter.
But what if you should add that clause, though? We encourage the committee to provide local control to counties determined development standards and limitations governing aid use as currently in the dash six amendment. I mean, because we're really endorsing what they've said, right? Is that what it says now, Nick?
Right now, the bill does allow, it provides, allows counties to be more restrictive than the bill already provides. The bill provides a lot of standards already, and it allows counties to even be more restrictive should they choose to do so.
I thought the, I thought it was more of an opt-in, opt-out type thing.
True, right. The first question is whether counties want to do it at all or not.
That's in here?
Yeah, and if yes, and if yes, then there are standards to comply with, and then it also is clear that counties can even be more restrictive should counties choose to do so.
Well, so you want to make that proposal as the amendment?
Yeah, as the...
This is currently referenced in the dash six.
Yeah, dash six amendments or something like that. Just because we're endorsing what they've come up with, really.
We will make that change, and then...
Is it, I mean, Mr. Whitney, it doesn't, just because they're in there doesn't mean they'll stay in there, so.
Right. Is there a second?
Oh, yeah, second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair does vote yes. Thank you.
And on that topic, we just wanted, Nick does plan to go over tomorrow to testify on this. There is a hearing tomorrow, so we just...
Oh, excellent. Could you also testify on that other bill for us? Are they at the same time?
I don't think so.
The, what time is your hearing?
3 o'clock.
Oh, okay.
So what about trying to get, now, this is giving me a Senate committee, what about trying to get somebody like Representative Zika to go with you? Because he, his bill that he had proposed about pilot projects for other counties, when I saw him last week, he didn't think it was going to go very far. But he might want to testify about this. I mean, it's a natural thing for him to testify, or one of our senators. Do you want us to call him and see if somebody wants to do it, or?
What I'm happy to do...
What do you guys think about that?
No, Representative Zika's bills, I believe, died, so...
Look for an opportunity, I agree.
Yes, so definitely, I'm sure he would be there 110% for us.
He represents part of the county.
Yes. So that would be excellent if he is in town. That would be good.
Do you like staff?
What I'm happy to do is to send them a copy of your letter and encourage them to testify along with me at the hearing. But if you, if any of, if any of the commissioners can make a call, that certainly adds more weight than a note from me, from the other...
I'll send him a text.
And I've notified planning directors around the state that this is on the docket for tomorrow. I've heard from at least six. A couple of northern Oregon coastal counties are going to support, a southern Oregon county and eastern Oregon county, so.
Good.
AOC, so, and rather than providing any names...
You know what, our legislative yesterday, we were kind of confused about what we'd done on ADUs at AOC last week. What we had done was we had supported, as our principals, the planning director's letter. That's what we did. That's what we voted on. So that three-page letter of how you'd approached it was how AOC voted, and I, it was, I think it was overwhelming, wasn't it, support for that legislative? So the, it's a strong endorsement from the AOC. It wasn't just...
Rob Brothert had put the program together, so that was his presentation.
Yeah, so hopefully he would be testifying with you as to commissioners across the state felt this was an option we'd like to have.
He will. He confirmed to me yesterday that he will be there to testify.
Good.
I know the Oregon Home Building, there are a lot of folks that will be, it sounds like, are gaining interest in this tomorrow.
Interesting.
Okay, so should we ask people in addition to Jack, to Representative Zika?
It'd be great to have a sound address.
I mean, okay, so I'll just send a message to several of them.
If we could get the final letter, and then we'd, on our computer, we could forward it to them, too.
Exactly.
Who proposed these amendments?
A good question. I actually haven't, didn't see any name on them. So, oh, you know, requested by the Senate committee, so it appears to be Senator Chair Dembrow.
Dembrow, didn't it?
He may have been the author. I heard about it initially from Dave Honeycutt, but since it's requested by the committee, I would assume that's Senator Dembrow.
So did you feel comfortable contacting Senator Dembrow, or had you already?
No, I haven't done that yet, but I mean, I will. I'll do it now, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, this happened at the end of the day yesterday, and then...
You had a conversation a few months ago with... Support for it. Okay.
Well, okay. We'll keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll get these signed at 12:30, or?
Yes.
And I did send our letter on to the head of OHA, Patrick Allen, telling him how much we supported 1552 with our letter attached, and was there anything more that we could do? Because surely Oregon would not want to lose that federal funding for our behavioral health programs. So I don't know. I haven't checked out.
Can I get that also as the signed copy on my computer so I can forward it to some people, too? Yeah, I think that's really important.
So...
We ought to find out who else is on that committee.
Well, I just thought I...
Which committee is it? No, I know you, that's great what you did.
No, I was thinking I'd even send it to the governor, too, because, yeah, we can't to lose that funding to be part of the eight states.
Yeah, that'd be good. Are we doing anything else today? Do we have executive session or?
No.
Other items or commissary reports?
So we have to come back at 12:30 then?
We'll do that after 12:30, okay.
Yes.
I guess so.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's... ...
We, with our deliberations, and now we have version four A and four B.
That's correct. Once again, Tanya Saltzman, associate planner. And I did not give a copy to... You have version four A and four B, which reflect the changes that we just discussed before the break. The difference between four A and four B is that four B includes employee housing structures must be owned and operated by an employer. Everything else between the two versions are the same. And you need copies.
I'd propose approval of four B, as amended, with amendments we've added. Apparently, the applicant's fine with that wording, what Tanya said.
With the owned and operated, yes.
That was cutting right to it. Good. So, yeah, acknowledging that you're including owned and operated. So the word owned is part of the item, and then also the next statement referring to there should be an agreement between employers for who might stay in that housing opportunity. Well, so, yeah, do we formalize a vote on selecting one? Is that how we...
Yeah, I would recommend, yeah, you select the option for the text, and then you would need to move adoption of ordinance 20-004. And if you're going to do it by emergency, you'd need to indicate that.
If we're going to do it by emergency, then we have to have all three of us voting for it, correct?
That's correct. It needs to be unanimous vote of a quorum.
With our deliberations, and now we have version four A and four B.
That's correct. Once again, Tanya Saltzman, Associate Planner. Oh, and I did not give a copy to... You have version four A and four B, which reflect the changes that we just discussed before the break. The difference between four A and four B is that four B includes employee housing structures must be owned and operated by an employer. Everything else between the two versions are the same, and you need copies.
I propose approval of four B as amended with amendments we've added. Apparently, the applicant's fine with that wording, what Tanya said.
With owned and operated, yes.
That was cutting right to it. Good. So, yeah, acknowledging that you're including owned and operated, so the word owned is part of the item, and then also the next statement referring to there should be an agreement between employers for who might stay in that housing opportunity. Well, so, yeah, do we formalize a vote on selecting one? Is that how we?
Yeah, I would recommend, yeah, you select the option for the text, and then you would need to move adoption of ordinance 2020-004, and if you're going to do it by emergency, you'd need to indicate that.
If we're going to do it by emergency, then we have to have all three of us voting for it, correct?
That's correct. It needs to be unanimous vote of a quorum.
And I have copies of that if anybody needs.
Well, I'll just make the comment that I really don't think it's necessary to add owned and, but because I am supportive of the project, I recognize the situation and affordable housing, we're always trying to add it, and especially affordable housing for people that are actually working here. You know, I can support it, but I'm not, yes.
And I'm in the same spot you are, and I acknowledged that earlier, so is there a discussion, Commissioner Henderson, about that, the owned portion of this? You know, the operation, no matter who owns a title to the land or the building, the operation is required by this code that it's operated by that employer for the purpose of housing employees. So I would conclude that...
Well, I guess it may, to me, it kind of more limits who would build these buildings and own them and things, and so I like that, and it helps provide that the text amendment matches the project the applicant's proposed, which is, I think, is a great goal, and they're okay with it. So I, that's why I just didn't have it in, that's my...
Okay, so...
Well, you've got leverage there, so I'll support it. I'll second it.
Well, thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner DeBohn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, but please note that I didn't think it was necessary.
So now, if the board's proceeding, the motion would be to approve ordinance 2020-004, which, with, yeah, with version four B of the text, and that, again, if you're going to do it by emergency, that would need to be as part of the motion to approve it with the emergency clause, and it would then just require a single reading by title only, and that could be moved as, both the reading and the adoption could be moved as a single motion or two separate motions.
No. Question about emergencies, so does that mean it goes into effect immediately, or is there a 21 days, or what?
It still, it goes effect immediately, subject to the 21 days. So Luba would, if someone's going to challenge it, they have 21 days rather than 90 days from now, and then 21 days.
I think I'm in, I think we tend to overuse the emergency clauses, but in this case, I think they're trying to get direction so they can move forward with design and things, and they wouldn't know for sure until 90 days otherwise. So now they have 21 days, and it doesn't seem like there's much opposition, so I'm in favor of that.
And so is that the motion?
Well, it can be. Yeah, I'll move that we adopt it by emergency, or...
So in the ordinance, and I'll second it, yeah.
Okay.
And then, but we haven't made a motion to adopt ordinance, I don't really have right...
Yeah, I don't have the number either, that's why I was...
Twenty, see, the 2020 day zero, zero four.
Okay.
Okay.
There we got it all in front of us. So, well, I can formalize it then. So I'll move...
Adoption by emergency.
Adoption by emergency of ordinance number 2020-004 by title only.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Acknowledging that the selection, previous vote was version four B, including owned and operated.
Okay.
Just acknowledging that.
Commissioner DeBohn?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
The chair now simply needs to read by title only, and...
By title only, an ordinance amending to Shute County Code Title 18 to allow employee housing as an outright permitted use in the Sun River Business Park zoning district and declaring an emergency and its ordinance number 2020-004.
There you go.
So, as you were commenting on other things after you voted on something, so I just comment, yeah, I like the fact that we've taken a step in this direction, and we'll see, hopefully it works well, and doesn't get, go off another track or something like that, or with other examples, so...
Well, I think after five years of renting 25 homes in the Sun River community, and that outlay of cash for five or six months, I believe this is a good route, good business decision for Sun River, our third largest employer, and I'm, hopefully, though, be able to actually get through the process in order to actually build something by next year's 2021. So now it's all up to you guys.
There you go.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Tanya. Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Okay. So, additional, other items?
So Eastern Oregon Counties Association, I think there's meetings Monday and Tuesday next week. There's a proposal that there's quarterly, kind of face-to-face meetings, so that'd be next Monday. I'm not in a spot to go attend, but maybe one or more of us could dial into a meeting.
What time is the meeting?
Oh, I assume it's first thing in the morning. I don't have that information right now. If we have a work session...
I could dial in on Monday.
Yeah, so we may be able to. I'm just acknowledging, probably nobody's driving over there unless...
Well, Commissioner Adair has thought about driving over for the next day.
For Tuesday, yeah.
I could go over Monday afternoon for Tuesday.
I can dial in for the Eastern Oregon Counties Association.
And I may be on the line there, too.
I want to, I think I'm going to ask to put on the agenda the issue of how do you, the role of when we're all kind of united on a position, and there's the leadership at AOC, how do we want to go forward? Because we still didn't get a vote. We got it laid on the table on that big issue, which, so I'm going to bring that up as a strategy-wise. I mean, we didn't really coordinate getting it to a vote. We, it happened because there were a lot of people willing to talk about it, but then it got laid on the table by leadership. So I was going to, I think I'm going to suggest that as a topic for Monday.
That's fine.
Our role of Eastern Oregon Counties vis-à-vis AOC on issues, or something like that. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know if it's a seven o'clock meeting, or a...
No, I was just looking at, I don't have that information right now, but...
Okay, well, I'll commit to call in for that.
It might not be seven because it is in person. It might not, I don't know if that, I don't think they'd have it at seven if it was in person, but...
And the second one is...
Is the 25th, and I think that starts at nine to three at Eastern Oregon University.
Do you think it's worth us continuing to go to those? I mean, I, I saw from Susan, is it Susan Roberts?
Yes.
Yes, who, her email questions about, should we rotate it? Is it worth having it in counties where, that aren't part of BIC, which is us? Do, I like being, the idea that we're trying to be involved, but I don't know how we're helping, and I don't know when we're going to ever get to this with our forest plan. What are you thinking about it?
My thought is that, yeah, we, let's participate, let's be an advocate for having this be a successful process, and that's, that's my goal. You know, this is, this is influential in the fact that the, you know, the ESAs and NEPA and the first forest plans from 30-something years ago, they're not, nobody's gotten through this yet. I mean, there isn't a natural flow of how do you pull off a forest plan, have a community discussion, and then get to a final version. So this is influential across the West.
But do you think we're getting, we're either getting much out of it, or having much effect on it, is all I'm asking?
Well, last, I know, prior meeting, I actually got the Warm Springs to be a participant because I drove to Warm Springs, hand-delivered the invitation, and so Bobby was on the call because I talked to Carl, who represents the Confederated Tribes, the Umatilla, and he said he was on the call, Patty, because of what you did. So if I know that I can make this difference, and I know so many of the people there, it's, you know, I, you know, it's worth a shot, and they do realize that they have to move them out of La Grande. I don't, I was hoping this one would be moved from La Grande, but it hasn't been. They realize that either they should have them in Pendleton or in John Day. It's much more centrally located.
So you are feeling like it's, we're...
I think it is. I mean, I did contribute by getting, you know, the Warm Springs people to be on, you know, part of it, and apparently, we have to have the tribes there. It's critical.
Well, and having a relationship with forest supervisors. So my, my thought is, we need to work on a culture of, a little bit of institutional knowledge, I guess is where I was going with this. The fact that commissioners need to hand off commissioners if, you know, if we're not in office from the future or whatever, but these supervisors that come in and say, yep, we're all working together, and then they get switched out, and then they lose continuity. This organization from county's culture could be the one that can help just glue it together a little bit more. So that, you know, as I say, that's still a high-level goal, yep.
I just asked the question because it's a little different than our own meetings where we really are very engaged in making decisions. We're just there as a backup.
And everybody...
I think we should call Glenn Casemara, though, because he hasn't been showing up, and I...
It's interesting that he hasn't today.
No, and I think I should call him now and find out if he's going to be there, and what he's thinking about this.
Yeah. Yeah, and what's, yeah, if he's always sending somebody else or the second-in-command, what does that mean? Because that's not the intention of this.
Right, he's...
Because the previous regional supervisor is the one that pulled it back and retired, so it's a shame that this happens.
Well, you know, Lisa's always there, but still, I just, I think I would like to get ahold of him and just see, like, okay, Glenn, I'm thinking about driving to La Grande. Are you going to be there? Because I'm, that's...
He could actually fly to...
Yeah. Well, they can fly to Pendleton, and then they have to drive up the hill. So, yeah, you can't, unless you're in a private little plane, you can't fly to La Grande.
So another item I had was Project Wildfire. Have we made the tradition, transition, and how's it looking, and what's the new full-time employee of our county? How's that looking?
So yesterday morning was Project Wildfire meeting down here. Well-attended, a lot of folks were there, but I walked in as it was breaking up because we were in our legislative meeting upstairs.
Oh.
But, yeah, Boone Zimmerman is our Project Wildfire staff person. Yeah, he seems to be getting up to speed and ready to go, so I don't have much more direct connection on that yet. But there was a lot, there was a lot of people in the room yesterday, so that's the indication that it's resonating with the members of the committee and folks that want to be in the room.
And then Monday afternoon, we have it on our agenda, the cost of adding the extra wildfire day in June, that weekend. So Ed's going to be at our meeting to present that.
Another item I had was parole and probation. Have you each had individual meetings on the expansion options and...
Yes.
Yes.
Designs, and are you having follow-up meetings on the budget or the costs related to them each?
I don't have a follow-up meeting planned. You know, I figure this is in preparation to get to a work session, so we can all just work together and talk.
Well, they're going to have, I'm going to have one next week, so I didn't know if you want it.
They should, they didn't have the cost yet.
Right.
They were saying, what, another week? So, yes.
Well, and I asked them to go back to, they kind of used for the, the option that just kept it all on the upper floor, they were just using the numbers from before, and I said, no, I think you should have apples to apples, and if you've, if you're using so-and-so to estimate the new one, you should have them estimate the old one so you can see which is, you know, what the costs are. So I'll, I'll meet with them, and then I'll find out what I find.
Well, if they have more mature numbers, I'd be interested. I'm not, I didn't have a...
Yeah, they're supposed to have the numbers available, I think, any, any week now, shortly?
Yeah, I'm supposed to do it Tuesday. Is it in the, the additional follow-up meeting on the cost estimate?
And that, so my thought would be, yeah, after Commissioner Henderson, because then he'll have, you know, kind of have that set of information that's shared, and then just...
Yeah. Did, another thing I had was, did we want to do anything further with, was there anything that came out of our joint, we always go to have these meetings, like the joint planning meeting? Anything we need to do as a result of that, or, we kind of have the meeting, and then we leave, and we're...
No, we just did the ADU thing, and just, I texted Representative Zika, Representative Hope about testifying for that, and the courthouse, or the judge bill, what is it, 4065?
Well, I'm talking about our joint meeting with the planning committee.
Well, right, they said, one of the last things, remember Ms. Jemberger said, was ADUs, ADUs, and so the fact that, what is it, dash seven, dash six came up, that I thought was relevant. So that's something that we...
It's kind of our action item, is to follow up with that, that statement where it is kind of closer, a lot closer right now.
Yes, than it was last week.
Non-prime resource land discussion.
So, anyway. What other ideas did you think, Commissioner Henderson?
Oh, I wasn't suggesting anything. I was just saying, does, is there something we should talk about? I don't really, I mean, we walk out of the meeting, and we have a few things, but I didn't know if there was anything we should take another step, but we've never talked about it separate from that meeting, is why I brought it up.
Okay.
That sounds like...
Well, that's why I asked the Tetheroe, because remember how many vacant lots we have in the county, and that report they prepared, and on that report, it said 200 for Tetheroe. So I'm just wondering if that's what, if they, that's an audit, is it really 200 now? Because they're saying that it's really not that many. So we'll see. Hopefully...
Yeah, 200 is a lot less, a lot more than 10%.
Yes.
There's probably four or 500 houses there, I guess, 10% would be.
So it'll be nice to know if, you know, we can adjust that number to actual. So, let's see. Oh, today I'm going to, a meeting on our Central Oregon health care, a meeting that has been called by a couple people that are part of that committee, looking at costs and how we can be actually more efficient and effective with what we're doing in Central Oregon with our health care. So, yes, Judge Crawford thought it would be a good idea, so we're getting together on that. Should be interesting.
When is the next COIC meeting?
That's on March 5th, I believe. March 5th, Thursday, March 5th.
So I'm just thinking that maybe even go down to Salem tomorrow and try to see Senator Dembrow, if he's available. Because when we were down there for the carbon bill, timber unity rally, the six commissioners testified, and he said something to the effect of, thank you for your elected officials being here and coming from more than 100 miles away. And then afterwards, he said, well, if you want to hear the rest of the story, come see me in my office, or something like that, he said. And I thought it was an odd statement referring, this is the public hearing in front of the public, the committee and the legislature on video, and he said something like, come see me in my office sometime. So maybe I'll take him up on that, if I can get over there.
If you can go, this is the perfect time to go.
But I don't know if he'd be available, so I'll call his office and ask.
But you may have to take a different route, because I don't know the...
I'll take 58.
Well, you can drive around through Eugene and stop it.
From my house, that's kind of a good shot.
Oh, you can go a little, yeah, forgot the other, oh, it's actually really not bad at all, is it?
About the same distance.
Exactly, so, oh, that's...
So we'll see. I'm just thinking out loud right now, but I looked at my schedule thinking, I almost may be able to do that, yeah.
You could go, that would be, that would be outstanding. I know.
And then I could be there maybe when next, just testifying also. We'll see.
Right, yeah, because he's test...
Only went three times last week.
You went three times?
I did.
Oh.
In a week period, Thursday, Monday, and Thursday last week.
Okay.
And with no carbon footprint, because you have an EV.
I drove my electric car one time, yeah.
One time, just one time.
But there was four people in the car the other times. Very efficient.
Oh, gosh, okay. Okay, I saw it. Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything else. I think we have some, something to sign.
Okay. All right. So can we adjourn the meeting then?
Have they already voted on that?
Did we vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a signature of your...
Okay, so, all right, so we may adjourn our meeting, our extended meeting now. So thank you very much.